Good evening, everyone. Appreciate you being here. It is five o'clock on Monday, March 27, 2023, and I am calling to order the Education Operations Committee for the Wausau School District Board of Education. Two, I'm seeking a motion to approve the minutes from February 27, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment? Do we have anybody that wishes to comment?
We do not.
We do not? Okay, I'll skip over this. Item number four. As the referendum-funded facility improvements continue to develop, construction and budget updates will routinely be presented. With that, I'll turn it over.
Thank you. Nick Anderson, project manager from NEXUS, for our four projects that are currently active right now, is joining me again tonight. We'll start with giving Nick a few slides on how these projects are coming, and then I'll finish with the budget. Go ahead, Nick.
All right. Well, I appreciate everyone's time. Hopefully, we'll get used to seeing each other. Things overall are going pretty well. The weather, for the most part, was pretty good this winter. We had a couple setbacks here. I'll call it this spring, just a little anticipated with snow removal and that. But overall, things are going very well. We'll do a quick recap of the four projects that are currently under construction. If you got any questions, feel free to ask. So at Stettin Elementary, where we have the sixth classroom addition there, we have all the CMU installed, and then the metal bar joists, metal roof deck, and all of the roofing insulation has been installed in addition to the mechanical roof curb and the plumbing drains. So you can see in a couple of those pictures up there that we're looking down at the roof. All insulation has been installed on the roof and the exterior of the building. And then the EB dam, rubber roofing membrane itself, is about 95% installed. And the reason that is 100% installed is we have to wait until we finish the exterior veneer, and then the final roofing system gets installed with the metal coping in that. Speaking of veneers, roughly 50% complete. And once again, these pictures are roughly a week old just so we can get them in more books. So there's been progress from when these pictures were taken until today. Temporary enclosures, meaning that we've basically got all the windows and doors plywooded up, and we're going to start heating the inside of the space so interior work can start taking place, including getting the floor poured and then masonry walls built on top of that, including MEP roughens. And obviously, eventually, we'll get into room finishes, but that's a little ways out. Last week, with it being spring break, was a great opportunity for us on three of the sites to get in the existing buildings and do some of the work to tie in the MEP, Mechanical-Electrical Plumbing Systems, from the existing buildings into the new additions. So as of, well, I guess it would be Friday, the hydronics, plumbing, and electrical tie-ins are all complete from the existing building into the new addition. Stettin wasn't difficult because it was planned for an addition in that place, but there was still some work that needed to be done. So when the time is right, we now have the MEP systems ready to go in the addition. So that's what's been going on at Stettin. And you'll see that there'll be a familiar feel as we go through all of these. South Mountain, we've got two additions at South Mountain. The smaller addition is, we refer to it as Area B. Area B, the CMU masonry has all been installed. The bar joists and metal deck is installed, and the roof is going to start going on probably within two weeks. We're waiting on material delivery there. Area C, the larger addition, roughly 95% of the exterior masonry is complete. We did start setting bar joists. That is currently ongoing right now. And then moving into the existing building, I got a lot of work done there last week as well. Roughly 80% of the HVAC, electrical, and plumbing tie-ins have been complete. And then that's also a complete fire alarm upgrade at that school, and that's been ongoing. A lot of it happened last week. They're also working the evening shift there to pick away at that portion of the project. Moving to Riverview Elementary, which is the two-classroom addition. It's being that it is smaller. It's a little bit farther ahead than the other two that we just looked at. Bar joists, roof deck has been installed. The roofing, once again, is 95% installed. We just need to finish the exterior perimeter once the exterior veneer is installed. And you can see kind of the one bigger picture there. You can see that the brick is ongoing as of today. It's probably actually closer there. It's 60% complete. They've got the east side completely done and about two-thirds of the way on the south side. And then they'll be wrapping over to the west side this week yet. The interior slabs have been poured there. You can see that one picture was a day that it was actually being poured. It's still green, wet concrete in there. As far as plumbing and electrical, roughly 95% done with the roughing in the new addition. There isn't a lot of it in there, but it has been ongoing. And then the tie-in from the existing building is roughly 95% complete on plumbing and 80% complete on HVAC. And electrical will be starting here in the next couple of weeks. So Riverview is going very well. And then moving on to the Environmental Learning Center. Last time we chatted, there was still some footing and foundation work to be done that has all been completed now. And backfill of the entire building has been done. We're roughly up to grade everywhere. And once we get, there's enough room for the black dirt and any site finishes that'll take place. But if anybody goes out there, you can start getting a real feel of what that space is going to be like when we're done. We've got 50% of the exterior cold-form steel wall is installed, so you can see that kind of the big picture on top there. So they're basically heavy-duty metal studs that the interior walls will be built off of, and the exterior facades will be built off of. And then the chimney, the CMU. So the chimney itself has two layers of masonry, the interior CMU, and then there's a furnished block on the exterior. And you can see in that picture, they started doing the finished block on the bottom portion of it. So that would be right at the floor level of the center space of the building. And then 95% of the plumbing has been installed. So there's underground plumbing before the slabs are installed in both wings and the center of the building. I'm not getting that wrapped up. And electrical, having the same procedure, roughly 95%, or excuse me, 90% installed on the electrical. And, you know, the basement is virtually done as far as the space. So they're starting to do some mechanical, electrical, plumbing, roughens in the basement as well. Next big thing to happen out there will be the big Blue Lamb deliveries, and then the rest of the structure will start getting installed. What I have, if anybody has any questions?
Questions from board members?
Just got one question. And unfortunately, given the events today in Nashville, bring school safety and security back into the forefront. Thoughts are with everybody down there for what happened. Is the entrance to the Environmental Learning Center built as a secure entrance as it would be to any other school?
You know, I don't have the plans in front of me, but I believe that it's controlled with a card access. So they have the opportunity, whether it's going to be open during certain times or if you have to have access. And I can follow up and get back to you, but I don't want to.
Okay.
As far as the space itself, it's basically a vestibule and then a lobby code area, and then you go into the main museum space with offices on the side. So I wouldn't say that the design of it is exactly like a school where the first thing you do is go into an office. You would be going into a vestibule there.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I couldn't find the designs either. Went back and looked for some stuff today, but just thinking through it, you know, where do we have exposure again? And this one came to mind.
Yeah. No, if you want, I can make sure. It's something to Keith that he can send over to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
We can also go back and ask Nick some more questions. But let's take care of this slide. This is the budget summary that you're getting pretty comfortable with. And this one has not changed much again since last month's notable changes. If you look at the bid opening column, we're going to be opening some bids. Starting within two days, we're going to be reviewing the bids from John Muir. And then April 4th, we're going to be reviewing the athletic phase one from both east and west. So you will see a few more of the amber-colored cells on here the next time we make this presentation. Also, the Hawthorne Hills Elementary, which is gray across the board. That's an old referendum number, 2.6 million. We're just finishing up some of our designs, getting to the 95% design at Hawthorne Hills. You will be presented with that at the next regular board meeting. And that will suggest that that gray number, 2.6 million, will become a green number. It'll then be a design number. We're right now deliberating with the amount of work we need to do on the westernmost parking lot at Hawthorne Hills. That western parking lot was built mostly in 2015 when we added on to Hawthorne Hills. And if we don't need to disrupt it in the name of making traffic flow a little bit better, we won't because it's pretty new. And if we don't have to invest the money, we won't. So we're going through that decision-making process right now with the busing company, the principals, and some of our other 19 numbers. So you'll see this chart starting to fill in a little bit more. The one number I call your attention to every month when I presented, the 2.4 million on the bottom. Last time we saw it, I think it was also 2.4. But the time before that, it was 2.04. So we had 2.04 million available, including our interest proceeds. And now we have 2.4 available, including our interest proceeds. So we're a little bit better off with our budget than we were two months ago. And I'll entertain any questions on this sheet as well as all the other sheets. We'll mix it against each other.
Bob, just one quick one. Can you remind me, when does the work start or even the design for Horseman?
We are kicking off the meeting on Thursday.
Okay.
I believe Thursday. With all the different groups, principal, different user groups at Horseman.
Okay.
Same thing we did with John Muir several months ago. So Thursday, that will start in our session.
Thank you.
One question. So some of these buildings, obviously, would be impacted by the consolidation. Are we planning to address that at some point in this summary or just leave it as it is? I'm thinking like, for example, Grant. If Grant is closing, we're not spending $2 million for a new entrance on it, just as an example. So that number at the bottom there would actually be 4.5 or 4.6 million dollars. So what are our thoughts on how we're going to address that? Or when will that be addressed?
Relative to this document, it would be easy. Following board direction and a lot of discussion. If, for example, we all agree that no work was going to be done at Grant, I'll use your example. The Grant dollar amount would become green, and it'd be zero. So the design at Grant would be $0, thus freeing up 2.068 million. That would contribute to that bottom number. Now, in terms of what bond council suggests we could do with that money, it's within, what they say, the four corners of the referendum question. So you look at the actual referendum question, and you reread it, and read it, and read it again. And then you put that together with what was presented with the community and your appetite for deviating from exactly what was presented to the community. And together, as a board, you could reallocate that money. Some reallocations are very easy. Some of the furnishings in some of these buildings. We do have a district-wide component on top. We have construction that's happening in a lot of buildings and additions, and we could just make them better, so to speak, or spend more money on those additions. Other questions as a board would be tougher, right? The second and third floor at West that we had discussions about, actually, that's a tough decision, right? But we would hope we'd get direction from you as a board how to reapply that money that was freed up by not doing Grant, using the example that we used. From this document's perspective, it's easy. You zero out, and it shows up on the bottom. But the decision, there's much more to it than that.
Well, and we know that that district-wide number goes up and down depending on what we have left over. I mean, some of that is, are absolutely things that have to be done, their priority. But a lot of it is also designed for, if we have money left over, these are things that they need to be done, and they're covered under that district-wide. So I would assume that that's going to be sort of left as just something that goes up and down depending on how each of these projects falls?
It's a little bit more explicitly spoken for than quite than that. For lack of having the exact answers in front of me, let's say it's about half technology improvements to what's left of the district and half loose FFNE or furniture for the district. So if you think about 8.6, about $4.3 million for district-wide technology improvements, not necessarily building-specific, and the same thing for loose FFNE or furniture. The newly-designed spaces have furniture expenses already carried in the budget, right? So we might have to worry about the newly-designed spaces unless because of inflation, maybe some of them go over. We would have to steal from that district-wide. But let's just say about half and half. Half district-wide technology, half district-wide furniture. And I think the number we were carrying is about replacement of about a third of the furniture district-wide.
So the change would then, it would be more likely to be like, okay, you know, here's a roof that really needs to be done. And so rather than falling in the district-wide, it might increase one of the other building's numbers if we added something to that building?
That would be one good use. Or?
Parking lot. I'm just thinking of the types of things that we know there need to be done, but we always, not always, but we tend to push them down the list.
Exactly. Or if inflation starts to rear its head again, and we get nervous about some of these bids coming in high. Remember, if they come in more than 10% over the design budget, we bring them back to you. And then if that design budget at 95% is high, then you have the chance to approve it or ask us to go back and redesign elements. If we took money out of, let's use Grant's example again, and that lower right-hand number became $5 million, it could give you the comfort level you need in exceeding some of those referendum budgets. And then again, when bids come in exceeding the design budget, it would give you a comfort level maybe you don't have right now that could be also.
Right. That's what I was going to say. Before we even get ahead of it, there's 80, if my math is right, 80% of the projects we have not even gotten bid budgets on yet.
Yep.
So, and two of those make up 60% of it alone.
Right. And I was just wondering along, you know, when do we start considering that? Maybe we consider it the first time we come and we run into one that's quite a bit over, I guess, you know? But at what point do we start considering that rather than scaling back projects? Because inflation is, you know, just pick one. You know, Main Elementary is $141,000. If it comes back that due to inflation or whatever else, it's $200,000 instead of scaling it back, at what point do we have confidence to say, well, we actually have some extra money here? We can, maybe we just do it bit by bit when we get to that point?
I think that's wise. We don't know what the next 10 bids are going to look like. We don't know what that right, lower right number's going to look like. I'm comfortable with where it is now. You're right next to it. That's a, we've got a lot of bids that are coming in yet. So look at some big numbers out there. 34 million, 28 million, 12 million, which are coming in yet.
So this is a living document. It's going to go on and on. With approval by us as we step through it, right?
And we see it at least once a month. And the things that you take action on that lead to this are the 95% designs that you give approval on. And then by way of the process that we outlined to start with, if things come in close to that design, you don't take action on it again. But if it goes in, comes in over 10% over, you would get a chance to take action on it again. So you could take action on a lot of what creates this document and how it evolves.
Other questions? If not, thank you. Appreciate it. All right. And item number five. Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative Agreement. Wausau School District Nutrition Service Department currently belongs to the Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative Group, WISNIM, however we want to pronounce that acronym. Co-op is requesting member districts to present the Co-op's resolution to their respective school boards for approval of continued membership for 2023, 2024 school year. So with that, we'll turn that over.
Hello. I'm Karen Fox. I'm the Nutrition Services Director for the school district. Just, I show up once a year to ask permission. So I'm, again, seeking permission to continue membership with the Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative. We save quite a few dollars in food rebates and food buy. We have really good contracts that we did not lose through the last several years. We continue to have challenges with supplies, but this group makes it easier. There are over 50 school districts from here to Kenosha that belong to this purchasing cooperative. And it is a benefit. Cost-wise, it provides education for myself as well as just sharing all those best practice things with all the issues that pop up in food service. So that's why I'm here tonight. Do you have any questions for me?
This takes care of a lot of things, so we appreciate that. So with that, I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full Board of Education to continue membership in the Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative by passing the presented resolution and agreeing to the 2023-2024 66.0301 cooperative agreement.
So move.
Second.
In a second. In a second. All right.
Get on the lead, get his last one to here.
Give it to me. All right. With that, any questions? Any follow-up questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Private school boundary amendment. All private schools served by the district need to have boundaries approved by the board. A minor change is being proposed by both Trinity Lutheran School and St. John's Lutheran School to more closely align with the location of the two schools. These two schools have already approved this change, and the final step is for the board to approve the change.
Just throw down just a little bit, Cassie, and maybe help you with your pointer, Brownler, and help me with your pointer, that overlap area in the middle of the map where it's overlapped and the color's different up from there.
Oh, I get right here.
Yeah, that area. If you take left of that, that's what Trinity's boundary used to be. And if you're wondering, why hasn't this ever come to us before as board? Because I don't know if I brought one of these in the last 10 years I've been here. If they don't change, you don't see them, right? So we go by previous agreement until they change. And in that overlap region, if you're going to St. John's, which is on the far east side, just a little bit outside of our district, you would think that that would be your boundary. But going back to the boundary that was drawn a long, long time ago, that was in Trinity's boundary. Now, boundaries have to be mutually exclusive. You have to be in one or the other. You can't be in both. And somebody wanted to be bused from that area where Cassie's cursor is to St. John's. And when we looked at the boundaries, we go, no, you're in the Trinity boundary on the west side. You're not in the St. John's boundary. And we looked at each other and said, that really doesn't make sense. So it doesn't really impact our world much, if any. Maybe one or two students would get bused to a more close location anyway. So both of the schools passed it with their governing body. And then the last step would be pass it with our governing body, and then it becomes the new boundary. So that's what we're asking you to do tonight. Change it to what you see in red, which is a little bit more consistent. Not totally consistent with our boundaries, but more consistent.
Any questions? If not, I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full Board the approval as presented, private school boundaries for both Trinity Lutheran School and St. John's Lutheran School.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion so carries. Number seven on the agenda. Waive Charter School Contract Renewal. Dr. Rousher and Principal Seymour will both present the proposed Waive Charter Contract Renewal to the Board. Welcome.
Thank you. So Dr. Rousher and I are here this evening to share a little bit about Waive, which is my favorite thing to talk about. So I'm very happy to be here. And on the next slide, I have some introductions. I'm Jenny Seymour, Principal of our charter. You all know Dr. Rousher, who is on our governing board. And back in the corner, there may be a familiar face, and Tom Hahn, who was the previous Director of Secondary Education. And the reason Waive exists is also on our governing board. And behind me, sporting the Waive attire, are two of our very passionate teachers, Lori Moret and Stacy Drake, just here in support. I wanted to give you a brief history as some of you are new to the Board since the onset of Waive. So prior to 2018, Waive was a program. And that program began with Tom's really forward-thinking in realizing that if the Wausau School District was going to be competitive in a future of education market, we needed to have an option for students who desired something outside of that traditional 7:30 to 3:30 brick-and-mortar setting. And this was during the time when the charters and the virtual schools were just emerging across the state. And Tom worked with a parent who really sought out an option because she wanted her child to stay in the Wassa School District. But her child also was very passionate about her sport and wanted to do both without leaving the district. So at that time, Tom partnered with the Wisconsin Virtual School, which is actually out of CISA 9. And the name is deceptive because it's not a school. But it is an opportunity to support those who are seeking to offer some virtual options within their district. And at that time, Tom sought interested educators within the Wassa School District who wanted to be part of this kind of new and exciting opportunity. And I was one of those individuals who said, I'm interested, as was Lori, who came on very early into the programming portion of Wave. And then things just grew organically, and I think that is because of the passionate people involved. And in 2018-19, Wave applied to become a charter. And that opened up a very advantageous opportunity for the Wassa District. Because students from across the state of Wisconsin can attend the Wassa School District without actually having to physically attend to campus. And this is the only school in our district that allows that. The last time I checked, Wave is home to 12% of the district's open enrolled students. We have students who attend Wave that live in Rhinelander, Wittenberg, Milwaukee, Surin, Eagle River. Really, a sampling from all across the state. And that's, that's pretty exciting. We continue to grow. In fact, at semester, we doubled our full-time enrollment. So just organically, again, we, we keep offering things that people are interested in. And to date, we have about 200 full-time students in K-12 and about 200 part-time students. The additional evolution of that includes adding full-time staff, which has helped us tremendously. And we are now here to ask for a renewal on our DPI charter contract. Those are good for five years. So time has flown by, five years is done. And the picture that is here as a reference is from our very first graduating class. And this is when Tom was still Director of Secondary Ed here, and we hosted that right here in this room. And for contrast, on the next slide, is last year's graduating class. And that was hosted at the Wassa West Auditorium. And to contrast that again, moving forward, our ceremony this coming year is at the Wassa East Auditorium, and it will be double what was the 2022 class. So we continue to grow, and, and we're all very excited about that. I already talked briefly about who attends Wave and mentioning people from across the state of Wisconsin. But to dig a little deeper into the student body, we have our K-12 programming, which is different than what we do in 612. And K-12 was added in 2018-19. The K-5 programming is really family-centered. It's an opportunity for families to have a direct involvement in their students and prioritize their day as they see fit, based on their family and their needs. Our teachers are heavily involved, they're literally in their families' living rooms on a day-to-day basis. And they become very close and that family-centered feel. The elementary students also participate in more synchronous learning than our 612 students do. And they also have paper pencil work. The 612 students primarily focus on an asynchronous learning environment because we shift the learning to that agency of student. They come up with their schedule, they come up with their plan, they seek out their, their teachers when they need them. And that relationship is built on inquiry-based learner agency model. We do have students from across the state, as I mentioned, and we have students with a wide array of skills. We have everybody, as a public school should. We have gifted and talented students, we have students who receive special education services, we have students with 504s, we have students who receive EL services, we have students who are passionate in their outside-of-school activities and can balance the standards that we would expect in a Wassa school with what they want to do personally and with their families. We have students who travel all over the world and still stay connected to their Wassa School District curriculum. We have athletes and kids who come to us because they have a lot of anxiety, kids who are disrupted, can't concentrate as well when there's a lot of activity in the classroom. So this allows them to have a learning environment that allows them to reach their goals. So if you were to take a microcosm of the Wassa West Commons during lunch mods, that's who's at Wave. It's a little bit of everyone for every reason. This slide, I think, again, just represents who's at Wave. And pictured there is Brady Cleveland, he's on Team USC, Team USA. He travels all around, next year he will be attending a Division One college playing hockey, chasing his dreams. Super proud of all of our students. And listed on the right-hand side, those are what some of our Wave graduates have gone on to do. We have kids interested in everything. The young man who is interested in auto mechanics was able to have a, a side business while in high school, fixing diesel engines. We have entrepreneurs, we have kids who are published authors now, those going on to medical school, horse trainers. One of our students now wants to be a, this coming graduating class, they always share their post-high school plans, she just told me she wants to be a ferrier. So a little bit of everyone. Wave is a little different in how we deliver our curriculum. The students, as I mentioned previously, really have to have a sense of learner agency because they're shifting from somebody telling them what to do and when to do it, to owning that themselves. Which, if a student can embody that, really sets them up for success in every aspect of life following high school. Like somebody who works remotely, and they have to have some time management skills. And we work very diligently with kids to onboard them and to help them develop these skills that won't be based on when the bell rings, move to your next class. It's based on when you've mastered what you need to master, you move to your next subject. The communication changes because we aren't passing each other in the hallway necessarily. It is reaching out to your teacher on Google Chat, reaching out via email, connecting in our infrastructure in which we offer our classes. So communication shifts, and again, that requires students to kind of mature and come to that plate with a sense of, here's what I need and here's how I get it. And really importantly, is a growth mindset. Because Wave isn't turn your work in and be done. It's turn your work in, get your feedback, where all that teaching happens from all of our passionate staff, and look at that feedback, see what you need to do to keep learning and reach mastery, turn it back in again. And sometimes it might mean turn it in again and again. But that growth mindset is, is something that we really try and get our students to embody as well. The purpose of this slide is to reinforce the idea that Wave is not emergency remote learning. Wave is a fully online school. One of my colleagues in the Virtual School Network said, there's a difference between school online and online school. Online school is meant to be delivered virtually. All of our curriculum is specific so that it is interactive and engaging, and has accessibility tools built into it so that it's available for everybody. We can even translate our curriculum into multiple languages. And the opportunities that exist within our school is because we're a school. We have clubs that are specific to Wave. We have FBLA, in fact, the first virtual chapter of FBLA in the state of Wisconsin. And one of our students, who you will see in just a moment in a video, is the student who really helped spearhead that with the advisor Don Jamison. We have quilting club. You'll see if you go past the Wave Learning Center Tuesday, and it's quilting club day, there's sewing machines all over the room, and kids are making quilts and other things. We have a book club. Stacy is in charge of leadership club, so we really allow kids to come to the table and say, this is what we want our school to be. They started a yearbook club. Our elementary team has Foodie Friday, where kids meet on Friday and their, their parents get them their ingredients, and they work with their teacher, and they, they make healthy things, and then she builds in those real-life skills of math and science and all the things that go into that. We have a ski and snowboard club for Wave. But we also have the unique opportunity that our Wave kids can do brick and mortar clubs and homecoming dances if they choose. Sports. So a student who lives on the west side and attends Wave can still do all the west brick and mortar activities. And take a class or two there if he or she chooses in a hybrid schedule. So if a child wants to do welding, which is a more hands-on class, you can do that. We have kids at John Mariner who are taking band and orchestra because they want to stay involved in that kind of encore, but do their core academics at Wave. We also have, also offer hybrid schedules in the opposite direction. We have some brick and mortar kids who take a class or two at Wave, giving them more flexibility because we have a very robust offering of classes, including a number of AP classes. The things that kids do outside of what we offer specifically, the freedom and flexibility they have in their schedule, allows them time for travel, for more youth apprenticeship kinds of things, for dual credit. Just really allows kids to have that ownership of their learning, their time, and their schedule, and for their family to be a part of that. We really are proud of our relationship-first experience at Wave and the fact that we're a K-12 learning community. And while kids may work independently, they're never alone. There are a plethora of supports that are built in. One of them being teacher office hours. So all of our teachers have scheduled times where they meet with kids, they're open office hours, join, get help, do some collaboration with other peers. Our elementary programming has weekly planned time where teachers meet with students and families to set goals, to do assessments, to review, to do very personalized one-on-one teaching. Our in-person support on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. Our staff, who are full-time teachers at Wave, host in-learning opportu, in-house learning opportunities where kids come as needed. They drop in. If they need a little more personalized face-to-face help, or need to work with another peer on something, or to join one of those clubs I mentioned previously, they pop in. Some stay all day, bring their lunch. Some, some people order pizza when it comes and I bring it in. But it's really a, a place, the room is set up to be kind of like a, an internet cafe, so to speak. So it's not that traditional learning center, but it offers that flexibility to stop in, have some social interaction if that's what those students desire, and also some personalized help. We also have a service that we partner with our operating partner, the Wisconsin E-School Network, and they give us access to tutor.com, which is live tutoring for students any time of the day or night they want. So if they are students who really functions well at 10 o'clock at night, and their classroom teacher is not online at 10, but they really want in-the-moment help, they can log in and get that live tutoring within their Wave classes. We allow kids to work at their own pace. So if you need a little more time to learn a subject, and you're, you don't have to feel like you're holding anybody back and vice versa. If you need to move faster because you've mastered it, you can. I already mentioned the growth mindset and opportunities for retries, but I also need to give a quick shout-out to our school counselor, Tara Suther, and our social worker, Ashley Karpinski, because they focus on that SEL aspect and any other needs our students may have. And this is the video that I mentioned, so we're gonna watch this quickly. Reggie Smith, who is our district Academy Award-winning videographer, put this together for us.
Hi, I'm Jalen, I'm a senior at Wave. I chose Wave because I felt I was not getting what I needed at a traditional learning environment. When I was entering my sophomore year, I was looking at what I could do to improve my learning and what learning style would work best for me, and I discovered virtual learning. Through Wave, I have flexibility with my classes, I can take much more classes than I could at a traditional school. I have flexibility that I can work what I want to and what I learned best, as well as catch up or work ahead what I want to through Wave. Even though it's a virtual school, our teachers are still very personalized, they can get one-on-one with us if we need to, for help or for advice. And their feedback is wonderful to help me know what I can do best and what to improve on if I need to.
With Wave, when I'm meeting with students, it's usually very small groups or most of the time individually. I can take them where they're at and push them to the next place.
Even though Wave is a virtual school, we can still participate in clubs, social events, sports, pretty much anything that a traditional school can. I am president of our Wave FBLA Club, as well as participate in quilting club and the Wassa West Month Childy. Because of the flexibility in my schedule, I can come in once a week and work with elementary students to help them learn better because they're all.
It's know them as learners really well, and I get to see that growth and, and get to see them blossom. And not even just as writers, but even in some of those soft skills.
When I was growing up, I always thought I went to work in the medical field. However, I took a Wave criminology course over summer and completely switched paths. I now want to work in forensic science. So through my junior and senior years, I've taken forensic science, criminal justice, psychology courses that can help me cater more to that career path and get an introduction to that before I go off to college.
And they get much more independent with what they're doing in the pre-education, they get better at time management, they get better at reaching out, communicating, being their own self-advocates when they have questions or struggles.
Wave has been such a great opportunity for me, not only to improve my learning style, but for more opportunities. I feel like I'm a leader and that I'm better learning because I've joined in Wave.
And that is why Wave is for me.
And this is why Wave is for me.
And that pretty much wraps up my presentation, other than to share that we are hosting an interest fair for anyone who wants to learn more this Thursday.
Any comments from the board or any questions?
Jim, I just have one.
Two questions. First, Jenny, can you clarify the enrollment? I remember seeing the third Friday counts, and I think you guys.
The third Friday counts don't represent where we're at because our enrollment period ends two weeks after the start of every semester. So the third Friday count is even before the second semester starts.
That's.
And we take kids at the beginning of every term.
And that's why I brought it up. I recall there was some difference in timing because if people look at the demographic report, it, it shows a drop of 76 kids down to 146, and I didn't think that that was accurate.
Those numbers don't capture when our enrollment comes.
Right.
Because we have that little flexible window of allowing kids. So many kids start their term and they're, they're thinking, I made a mistake. And then they, they hop in and it's just not captured, and those times don't align with us.
I wonder if it wouldn't be worth a footnote somewhere on there, because if you have parents, potential parents, of students who are looking at this saying, jeez, how many students do they support? Seeing 146 versus seeing 250 or whatever you're up to now makes a big difference from a, a size and scale.
That's a great idea.
And the second question I have is, what do you need from us? Because I recall hearing earlier that the curriculum for Wave was, I'm gonna use the term outdated because I don't know any other term, but that it needed to be refreshed or brought up to some new level, you had mentioned, Keith. Where are we with that? Do you need anything from the board to help invigorate that so we can attract more students?
I appreciate you asking. Our curriculum actually is top of the line. We have, we work with the Wisconsin E-School Network, who are the leading provider in the state, and they have access to all of the national online curriculum. It's phenomenal, our curriculum is phenomenal. But we really need a bigger space because we're outgrowing our current spot here in the building.
Seems to be a hot topic these days.
If only we had a consolidation coming that was going to leave some space.
Like sidebars and that. All right, so then I must have misunderstood the comments about the curriculum needing to be.
I think it was the elementary, there had been some comments, sorry. There had been some comments from some of the parents in the open enrollment survey that said there were some limitations on the elementary curriculum. I think it was.
I know what you're referring to now.
Yeah.
For our elementary curriculum, I think one of the, the pieces that was mentioned is that parents would really like to be able to pick and choose. We just use one curriculum, and we have a staff who had, is very invested, now they're experts in that curriculum. In time, I, I think we could bring on another one and give parents more choice. But to date, we, we're kind of limited. We also could use more full-time staff. Our, our staffing is, all of the work and all of that growth and all of that organic expansion that you've seen is because of the passionate full-time employees that we have. We also have a great, great adjunct teachers, but what they can give is different than what our full-time staff can give.
It's interesting, too, when you talk about the opportunities that it provides kids. For example, Brady, you know, is invited to the NHL draft this year, still being a Wassa West graduate.
Right, and graduate from Wassa.
It's beyond impressive, so.
Obviously, our students have embraced gradual release of responsibility to their, their curriculum that they choose and the opportunities. I think it kind of builds off of what we're talking about right here, giving the opportunity and the choice to do that. Because the flexibility puts us in a position where we are now, I would say, knowing a lot about the virtual schools around the state of Wisconsin, we're kind of taking over, we're kind of bringing more people into central Wisconsin, which I think is a big plus that I don't think a lot of people understand with virtual learning. And so I would strongly encourage you to continue doing what you're doing. This is something that started 20 years ago, and it's now really taken off here, and you've done a tremendous job, so congratulations.
The only thing I would add is, a presentation like this is good because it gets the word out. But I, you know, I think we need to continue to advertise this because it pays for itself. So, you know, when there's funding questions about running commercials or putting up signs or that kind of thing, I think it's, it's not an expense, it's an investment because, you know, if you attract one or two students, it pays for the, for the advertisement, so.
What is the enrollment?
We're at approximately, I think it's 1.98 full-time K-12, and about equal that in part-time.
Oh, wow, okay, great.
You said that, yeah, well done. You know, and if you can continue to do it. What is also very nice about this is that you can supplement students that are in the brick and mortar and give them the opportunity. If you don't have an AP class being offered or an IB class being offered, you can offer through you in Wave. And I think that goes to what you just said about this whole idea of advertising. I think we need to do that. I know that we have signs out there saying, Wave, people start waving. They need to know what the acronym is so that we can then encourage students to be doing this, and we can attract more. doing this and we can attract more students to what we're doing. So again, thank you.
I have a question. I know you said you offer the different classes in different languages. Are the students that are using those in different languages, are they able to get help in that language? Or is that a tough? So at least one of our curriculum providers, our major one, it's called FlexPoint. That's what most of our core classes are offered in, including our AP classes and our elementary courses. Those are all FlexPoint curriculum. Our teachers can personalize them and add things and just like any teacher in brick-and-mortar, you keep making it better over here. But the language translation, I think there are 40 different languages that can be translated just as an accessibility tool that's built in. It also has text-to-speech. It has the ability to hover on a word and it will give you the definition. So the tools that are technology-driven and embedded in the curriculum really make for accessibility to be easily achieved for students who need it. We do have an EL teacher who works with us as well to help give additional support when that's required. Did that answer your question? I don't think we have a lot of kids that use it, to be honest.
Okay. I just have a quick question. How many full-time staff do you have from a 612 and then K-5 and then additional like adjunct, adjunct staff numbers? I'd be interested.
It's a great question. We have two and one-half elementary teachers. Those elementary teachers, two of them also teach middle school classes. And then we have Stacy, English, all English. So she's got 20 different classes. Don Jamison teaches all of our electives that are CTE, business-related and marketing. She also teaches a few sections, another advantage for the state. So because we're part of this network with the Wisconsin East School Network, we can contribute a teacher to the state catalog and kids from other virtual schools who don't have a teacher end up taking the class with us. And the other benefit is if we have a need, we could also do the same thing. We have a science teacher who teaches all the sciences, Renee Rochette, and we have Lori, who is queen of all of special ed, who just embraces everything and is the engine that keeps us rolling. But as a team, it's a very small team that works tightly together, keeps the wheels on the bus, forward-thinking, passionate, and it's that group that really put together our interest fair for Friday. And to answer the second part of your question, we have about 30 adjunct teachers.
Thank you. And thanks for the presentation.
Not to put any pressure on our administration, but need to put the pressure on the colleges to prepare teachers to teach virtually because that is a different tool. It has to be trained and it can't just be thrown in somebody's lap to be able to say, I can teach virtually. You've got to be prepared for that. And so I would really encourage the University of Wisconsin to start really putting out teachers that are prepared in that area. Maybe pressure on the superintendent there.
You're right. It's a totally different skill set. And to do it well, you have to be invested in the professional learning that needs to happen to be a really good virtual teacher. But we do have a couple college students who are working with us as paras, and they're working with our elementary kids primarily. So they're getting that little extra feather in their resume right now.
It's a good way to build from within, and it's going back to what Tua just talked about, the fact is, what can we do? And I think that's what we can do, to build from within and start getting more people prepared for this new world of education.
I think one of the things that Jenny probably didn't talk enough about because she's humble is her role. Besides leading the school, she has a leadership role with WHEN, the East School Network that we were talking about. And when you talk about teachers and professional learning, Jenny provides professional learning for them, certainly weekly in terms of professional learning community meetings, as our full-time staff are in with her weekly and working with each other. And then just like we would on another, you know, when our brick-and-mortar teachers have a professional learning day and in-service day, Jenny's putting materials together for all of her WAVE staff, including the adjuncts at that point, and she models what good virtual learning looks like so they don't necessarily have to be in-person or online at a certain time, but they can access that asynchronously. And then she takes feedback from them as well.
I just wanted to add a comment. When I first joined the board, I was really excited to hear, to meet with Tom and hear all the things that were happening with WAVE. I have a daughter who has taught, had taught and does, continues to teach in a virtual school, and grandchildren that had been in virtual, were in virtual schools even before we started this one, and I was surprised that Wassa didn't have one. And I'm so excited about Tom's vision and your part, and all you've done to accomplish this. This is absolutely a thrilling presentation. Thank you.
I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the WAVE charter contract renewal as presented. So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Production agreement between Wassa School District Board of Education and the City of Wassa. The agreement between the two, between the school board and the city for the recording of school board meetings was last entered into on December 2nd, 2014, for the 2015 calendar year. This document is considered intergovernmental and we are required to have a current agreement.
Good evening, board members. This document that you see is a draft that the City of Wassa sent over for, to get approval. And as you know, the City of Wassa and Wassa Area Access Media provide us with an important service, and that's live streaming these board meetings. And then certainly they also step up and cover any community meetings that we have as well, be it referendum or restructuring. So as the city works on their final draft, we're just seeking approval from the board to continue our work with them and move forward with this contract.
Well done. I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board of education the approval of a production agreement between the district and the City of Wassa. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion so carries.
Thank you.
Very much. Appreciate that. I'm seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, we can continue right here with the beginning of the meeting or take a five-minute break.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Two minutes? Okay. Look at that.
1:26.